All right. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. At this time, I'd like to call the September 14th, 2021 Planning Board Meeting to order. May I ask everyone to stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any members that have any conflicts of interest or disqualifications with any of the items on the agenda tonight? All right, hearing none. We've got three... We've got six members. We've got a big crowd. All right. Any changes to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, posed. Agenda is approved. Are there any changes to the August 10th, 2021 meeting minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
All right, second?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved. We don't have any old business. First item tonight is PB 21-17, Hugh S. Miller IV, request for conventional rezoning of 162.5 acres from agriculture and general business to single-family residential mainland, leaving 2.5 acres GB. The property is located in Barco, Tax Map 70, parcel 37 through 40 Crawford Township. And Ms. Glave?
Yes, thank you. Just a little reminder, the UDO affords two different ways to rezone property. One is what the applicant is requesting, which is, you'll hear me call it conventional zoning. The other is a conditional zoning. And just remember that a conventional zoning, you're not allowed to place any kind of conditions on that, even if the applicant offers them. The state of North Carolina does not recognize that as legal. Just to orient you to the property, at the top of the screen, you can see the shortcut road and Carrottoke Highway intersection. And just north of the blue highlighted property, you'll see the campus for the Currituck High School and Currituck Middle School. The next slide just zooms in a little more so you can see the property, and you can see that it backs up to the Coinjock Bay there. The next slide is your zoning of the property. The tan color is agricultural. The red along the highway is general business. The next slide shows your land use plan classification, and that green area in the back is considered conservation. There's a lot of factors that go in determining what is conservation, and a primary part of that is wetlands. And the applicant has had an... or is working on an Army Corps delineated approved wetlands, and that line is pretty close, I think. The following slide is what our maps indicated as wetlands, so ours may not capture all that. Our maps are based on soil types and not an actual field survey like the applicant is having done. The following slide is the applicant's exhibit of the rezoning. So the... we'll call it blue-green color. That is agricultural to the rear. And then there was a little piece up front that was general business that is now going to be all rezoned, single-family mainland. And then that purple piece will remain general business, that little piece right along the And that general business piece I was looking, it'll be about 2.5 acres, and the remainder of the property would be agriculture, would be single-family mainland. The next slide is... one more, Jenny? Thank you. This is something that the Board of Commissioners asked us to start putting in our staff reports for them that I thought you might could use as well. I must say, when we start, that this is a rough estimate based on raw data. There's lots of assumptions that go into play when you're trying to determine density just based on zoning. But these are rough numbers, so I'll share those with you. The property is currently zoned agricultural to the rear, which would require a conservation subdivision. The applicant has a couple of choices if he were to develop the property as agricultural. Assuming that they choose 50% open space, there is a minimum lot size of 30,000 square feet and a maximum density of .33 units per acre. So that would afford about 52 lots. However, if they choose to bump up that open space to 60%, the density goes up a little bit as well, from .4, from .33 to .4. So you're looking at about 62 lots there. Now, if the property is rezoned to single-family mainland, you're looking at a traditional subdivision as one of the choices. That minimum lot size is 40,000 square feet with 30% open space, and you're looking about 98 traditional subdivision lots. If it's developed as a conservation subdivision, that lot size does reduce significantly down to 20,000, 25,000 square feet. But it does require a little more open space, and there are density standards in the UDO for the... and in the land use plan for the full-service area, and then drawing the density off the conservation area as well. So you're looking at about 104 lots there. Again, it's a rough estimate. It's not quite double what's allowed now based on what is being requested, but right around there. This area, next slide please, Jenny? There we go. This area of the county is considered the Barco Coinjock Airport Subarea. And there is quite a bit of full service in this area because this is one of the areas of the county that could, with managed growth, develop as a full-service area. And when you talk about infrastructure, there's county water there and that other county services would be available. The conservation area to the rear, conservation... the purpose of conservation is for the long-term management and protection of significant, limited, or irreplaceable areas. And so those areas in the back that are conservation, it says that we need to conserve the natural, cultural, recreational, scenic, or biological productive values of these areas. And then I'm not going to read them to you, but there's some land use plan policies there that are relevant to developing in the conservation area. The next slide is, we've already talked about, the UDO does not allow conditions to be... the UDO nor general statute allow conditions to be placed on a conventional zoning request. The next... yeah, that slide indicates the section of the UDO for conventional rezoning request. It's 11 standards that the Board can choose to weigh in when determining whether to approve or deny a conventional rezoning request. And one of those standards does speak to adequate public facilities. It's number nine on your list up there. It said, "Does the proposed amendments result in a development that is adequately served by public facilities?" And then it lists out schools and things like that. The reason I bring that one to your attention, because of the school capacity concerns right now. I'm sure you've heard a lot of talk about that since the school started this year. If you'll go to the next slide, Jenny. This is the school capacity chart from May. We do not have this year's numbers yet. When we have those, we will certainly update them for you. This property right now would be districted to the Central Elementary School area. And now, please know that that could change, that the school system could redistrict at any time. But according to the school system, Central Elementary has 24 seats available, and that would be actual seats available, not what would be needed in the future. That's what's available now. And then when you look at committed capacity, that's what the county has already committed to serve. So it may be subdivisions that are approved but not fully built out. That's why those numbers are different. So when you look at the committed capacity for the Moyoc-Shawboro Central Elementary School Attendance Zone, you're looking at the 24 available in at Central, and then you're looking at all of those elementary schools coming in at 127% for their committed capacity, and the high schools at 101% committed capacity. And again, attendance zones can change. The school sets those, and the school sets the capacity for each of their schools. That's not a number that the planning department comes up with. That's a number that the school system provides us. If you go to the next slide, please. We talked earlier about conditional zoning versus conventional zoning. And since 2007, when conditional zoning was put into our UDO, it's been used as a tool to guide development, to align with community values and character, and to make sure it's compatible with the neighborhood and with all of your adopted plans. With the conditional zoning, you're allowed to impose conditions that the applicant would agree to, and the applicant can also offer conditions to make sure that the property is developed in harmony with the neighborhoods around it and in compliance with the land use plan and the policies there. We talked about that already. The single-family mainland zoning district is... the purpose of that is to accommodate low-density residential neighborhoods. And this area, in this Maple-Barco Airport area, you're looking at about one unit per acre in density. And let's see, and the intent of the district is that it will not interfere with agriculture activity, interrupt scenic vistas from Carrottoke Highway, or place undue stress on county's education infrastructure. Now, the purpose of the general business is to accommodate a wide variety of residential and commercial uses, bounding... generally, you'll see GB along the highway. Some of the uses that staff is calling out that may conflict with the neighborhood, that may occur in the GB or the SFM zoning district. GB would allow a parking lot, a bar nightclub, a lounge, a pawn shop. And then the SFM portion, where that existing wetland and tree stand is, there is concern that the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Clean Water Act allows for the trees to be cut down. You just couldn't disturb the stumps of the trees, put that tree stand there. Generally, a conditional zoning is used to tailor a permit and a use of the property that reflects the community values and community neighborhood character. And since 2013, the only conventional zoning requests approved have been for either a downzoning of a property to correct a bifurcated zoning district, and that's where you have two different zoning districts on one piece of property, and then one other approved that was adjoining the same district on all sides. Next slide, please. Without a master plan, it's not possible to verify that the 2006 land use plan is consistent with policies. I won't read the policies fully to you, but you can see them in your staff report. And just an example of some are HM1, HN3, and CD4. And since this is near the high school and middle school campus and such sparsely not-dense areas, we'll call it, it's vitally important to make sure that this is done, to make sure those areas are protected. And then we talked about the review standards in the UDO for conditional zoning. And without that master plan, it's also not possible to determine if those review... some of those review standards are being met, and they're listed in your packet. I won't read those to you. And based on that, planning staff is recommending denial of the conventional rezoning and that the applicant resubmit with a conditional zoning that will address the 2006 land use plan compatibility policies. And then a conceptual plan can provide more detail and the desired flexibility for the applicant with assurances that the application would maintain the community values and consistency with adopted plans. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Glave.
Yes, sir.
Does anyone have any questions for staff?
Is there a list of the conditions on the conditional zoning?
Yes. The conditions for a conditional zoning application have to be agreed to by the applicant and the Board of Commissioners. So if the Board of Commissioners wants to place a condition that the applicant doesn't agree to, then that would not be a condition. And the same with if the applicant placed a condition that the Commissioners didn't agree to, then that would not be allowed to be a condition either.
You say the utilities are out there? I mean, Dave Spence made a comment that they would roughly need to know the water that's going to be required for the project.
Waters along the highway would have to be brought into the property.
Am I correct in looking at this where it says the front part of the property is full service?
Yes. About the tree line back is conservation.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Give you all a minute in case you come up with something else. Anybody have any more questions for Ms. Glave? All right. Is there anyone here to represent the case tonight? Okay. Are you presenting it as the... or just speaking on it?
Mr. Balance, yes, I am presenting and I am speaking.
All right. Good to go. Can you give your name and address for the record, wherever they're at, whoever's keeping it?
My name is Sam Miller. I'm also Hugh Samuel Miller IV. The Sam is a little shorter. I live at 150 Baxter Estates Road in Moyoc, North Carolina. I took a look at what you have tonight, and we spent a lot of time on it. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I can't tell if I can't really hear myself here, so... But we took a lot of time going through what you've taken a look at, and I've listened to what Ms. Glave, as well as the other planning staff, has presented. And I'd just kind of like to walk through it again, just with a different perspective, if that's all right. For starters, we are asking for what's called a straight rezoning or a just single-family mainland for most of the area and doing the... leaving the GB that was put in place a long time ago out front. We want to reduce some of the GB just to kind of straighten it up with the way the front of the property steps, so it's a little cleaner and neater, and then we can have access coming in and doing those pieces. If I kind of start at the beginning of it, just looking at the conditional zoning, I'll try to explain to you why towards the end, and hopefully what I present to you will explain more of why we're not in favor of conditional zoning. We've done it before. We've been through it. And a lot of it centers around the fact that, once we do conditional zoning, there are flexibilities, as Ms. Glave described, within the process. It's written in the UDO. But do any of you know what those flexibilities are that you're allowed to change without starting over and going through the process again? Well, if you look in the UDO, under modification standards, minor modifications, it's subsection 2.4.5. And in there, you can change driveway locations without having to go back to the process. So if we get into this and we decide that, you know, that driveway is just too close to the corner, and I need to shift that back a little bit on that lot, no problem. You can do that. You're allowed to change structural floor plan revisions, meaning that, okay, these are the houses that you showed that you were going to build. Now, inside, instead of having a wall here between these family rooms, you're going to open it up and put a beam in. That's permissible. So you can do whatever you want inside the house of the footprint of the house. That's permissible without a change. And that's called structural floor plan revisions. That's item B. Item C is minor shifts in building size or location. So you could shift the building over a little bit, maybe make it a little bit bigger, those kind of things, but you kind of got to stay on that building pad area that you specified. You can also make facility design modifications for amenities. Those are the four things that are permissible. And it reads as well, "The changes in the following shall constitute minor modifications that may be approved by the Director." And I believe you would be the Director. So if those changes that we might make during the process, anywhere during this process, whether it be final plat just before we go to Commissioners, whether it be a preliminary plat, whether it be a TRC, what have you, we start over. And that means we go back. We may call for community meeting if required. We may go then to TRC. Then we would go to Planning Board. Then we would go back to Commissioners. And when you guys ask the question, "Why are you here again?", that's why. Because there's four things that you're allowed to do that for. Anything else, not permissible. So if you decide to change a BMP or best management practice, a pond, if you will, and that pond affects a lot line, and now, you know what? That lot line's too close, and we've got to move that lot line? Even though the lot may stay at 30,000 square feet, or 25,000, or 40,000, or whatever it is, we've got to go back through the process. And it could be one lot that does it. U.S. Post Office, we sit down with them later in the process through TRC after conditional zoning is approved. If they decide that they don't like the location of that, and now we need to shift a lot around and move the cluster mailbox or CBU more towards the front of the community or more towards the back, more towards the intersection, and it affects something, we've got to move a lot, we've got to move a sidewalk, back through the process. DOT doesn't like a site triangle once a little more. Maybe they had an accident somewhere. Somebody got injured and hurt, and they want more visibility. And we've got to shift the lots, you know, 10 feet to the right. Not permissible. That's not a minor modification. Back through the process. Move a sidewalk. Dominion Power needs a larger easement. We've got to move street trees back. Well, if you drew them and you put them there, and now you have to change that, that's not a minor modification. That was not any of the four things I specified. Maybe a ditch, because we're pretty flat, so it's hard to plant all this stormwater up front and determine whether or not, you know, what's my rise, my run, my fall? What's the topography look like? How wide's this ditch got to be to maintain the 3.1 swell? Ah, that 3.1 went up here. You know, your sidewalk's in the ditch. Now we need to move this ditch. Well, ditch is wider. Sidewalk, boom, back through the process. We... connectivity. TRC, we sit down, and staff reviews connectivity and says, "You know, we didn't look at connectivity yet, and we need you to make a connectivity allowance over here to connect to this adjacent property. We're not going to do anything with it, but it needs to be there." Well, wasn't on what we put through on the conditions? Back through the process. This is what's so frustrating about the process. And it's not that we don't have standards that we don't have to follow. We do. We have a very big manual called a UDO, and all the things that we do besides what's put on the conditions are all specified, and we have to follow all them. So if we make a condition and it has a conflict with the UDO, we've got to go back through and talk to everybody again and figure it out. My point to all this is, we have a process that we wrote down that tells us density, that tells us how far we've got to do setbacks, that tells us the lot sizes, that tells us we've got to check and make sure we've got sewer. It checks and says, "Do we have water available? Can it be brought in the property? Who's going to do it?" All that stuff happens, and that happens through the major subdivision process. All the conditional zoning does is it puts a reset in place that any time we step anywhere outside of that, boom, we're back around. So all those minor things that you think shouldn't be a big deal, they all become a big deal, and it becomes a lot of expense and a lot of time and a lot of delay and a lot of frustration for a lot of people, myself included. So I'm asking for something unconventional that we don't typically do, but this is why. And I've done a lot of subdivisions. We've dealt with Laurel Woods, which was a conservation subdivision, and we had conditions on that. All these things are handled through our TRC process, through a major subdivision process. To some of the things that Ms. Glave presented, and some of these things are rough, but by my calculations, the most lots that we're going to achieve is 90. And that would be if things are phenomenal. And if you follow me on the math of this, 160 acres, we take away 50 for the wetlands, which is what it has basically worked out with. We have had a consultant come in and do a wetlands analysis, and that's how this process starts. The consultant comes in, does a preliminary evaluation for the Army Corps. They contact the Army Corps because they know a lot about wetlands. They've worked in this. That's what their career's been for years. Army Corps comes in, Army Corps confirms or refutes, maybe they, "Ah, okay, you know what? A little more here." Yeah, you're right. I like what you said. It's basically the meeting of the minds at that point. And then the Army Corps says, "This is where the wetland line is." And then we mark that, we survey it, now we know the wetlands. These guys are pretty good at it. That's why we pay them the money to go out there and take a look at it. So we've got about 50 acres of wetlands, maybe a little more, maybe a little less. That puts us at 110 acres. If I take out the 15 acres that Tammy talks about for infrastructure, and we take out a couple acres for the GB out front, that leaves us about 90 acres. At one unit per acre, which would be the max density in full service, that means 90 lots, not 104. And if we were in non-full service or a limited service, it'd be 67 lots. So by our numbers, we figure there's probably about 80 lots that we can realistically get there, between what we've got to do with drainage and other pieces. Another element is, we lose about five acres because there's a utility easement that runs through the property for the high tension lines. If you've ever seen it, there's 33,000 volts overhead, so they have a big access for that as well. And that carves out of the mill. Doing conditional zoning does not change the density. And we talked a lot about it or presented a lot, that single-family mainland was intended for low-density subdivisions. Conditional zoning doesn't change the density, and it doesn't change the calculations. The calculations are the same, and they're in the UDO. If we don't like how many houses you can build on an acre of land based upon whether it's full service or limited service, we need to change the UDO, not do conditional zoning. When we look at the wetlands and we talk about the scenic vista views and not wanting to destroy those types of things, we do these things. This is a business. We gain no more resale, nothing else of the property by cutting trees down. All we gain is expense. We can't develop the property. The trees consume over 100 gallons of water. The trees consume over 100 gallons of water per day during a rainstorm, so they aid in our stormwater planning and our discharge to this, what would be the inner coastal waterway out the rear. There's no reason for us to cut them down. Basically, it would be like going out and spending money and just lighting it on fire because we're going to get nothing for it. We're going to spend a lot of money, but I'm not sure what we get. There is already a roadway, if you look on the, whether you look on the aerials or otherwise, that goes to the sound, so there is sound access already. Maybe we've got to clean something up on the edge of it, you know, because it's starting to grow over a little bit, but there's an old shell sand path that goes back to a shell sand boat ramp in the back, in the rear of the property. So it's not like we even have to carve that in, it's already there. It was also mentioned that a conceptual plan could provide desired flexibility for the applicant with assurances that it maintains compatibility with the community values and consistent with officially adopted plans. Again, officially adopted plans is the UDO. We have to follow that, whether it's conditional or whether it's a straight rezoning. There's no difference. If it says you can do .7 per acre, you can do .7 per acre. If it says you can do 1 per acre, it says you can do 1 per acre. It doesn't matter if we have certain lot sizes we have to achieve. We have to have, you know, a 60-foot right-of-way for the roads if we're doing a DOT right-of-way. We have to bring in county water. We have to go make sure the septics all work. We have to comply with the stormwater manual. All of that stuff still has to happen. Conditional zoning doesn't change any of that. As far as the schools go, and I have three kids that go to school here. I have two that are in high school, and I have one that is in elementary school. I'm aware of, you know, we have more people coming here, and it's our job as community leaders and as commissioners, not yourselves, obviously, or the planning board, but to plan for that and the school board and to build schools as needed, as we develop property, as the community grows. That's part of the role and part of that job. I know it's a tough decision sometimes, but sometimes it has to be done. As far as things go with that, during the preliminary plat phase, if you take a look pulling up here. Major subdivision process, and that's, you know, section 2.4.8. You can go into that, and you can see that during the preliminary plat piece that it's under section 3 for type 2, because this would be more than 50 lots if we did 80. That's more than 50, so it's a type 2. It's a type 1 if you do 20 or less. And under section 3II, "The Board of Commissioners may place limitations on timing and the extent of new developments in accordance with Section 66, Adequate Public Facility Standards." So during preliminary plat approval, at that point, the commissioners can look at it and say, you know, the schools are pretty tight because we're at 82% in the high school and we're, you know, at 91 in Central. How about phasing, Mr. Miller? You know, we're okay with you doing some, but we need time to build the schools and do what's got to do so that the children are taken care of. Okay, well, what, how many would you like to do? I don't know, maybe we do 20 for year one, and we do 30 year two, and we do, you know, the remaining 30 in year three. Something what we did when we did Laurel Woods back in 2007. That all happens at preliminary plat, whether it's conditional zoning or whether it's straight rezoning. So again, we have a process for it, and we handle it. The difference is that when we handle it at that point, if we have to make a change of something, we don't have to go back through the whole process again. That's the difference. All these things we talk about, we still address as part of the UDO. It just is a difference of, we make the change, everybody who's involved with it agrees to that change, and we move forward. If you follow into section 4, the preliminary plat standards, "All applicable standards in Chapter 6 subdivision infrastructure standards and all standards in the ordinance have to apply." Item 2, standards in 2.4.6. D, special use permit standards applicable. We'd have to deal with special use permit as well, and when we go through that process, all those things are questioned as well again. It's another checkpoint for the commissioners. They can ask questions on that. We can, if we have problems with something and something's not right, we still don't go forward. But we don't have to start over and go back to the beginning if we have to make an adjustment based upon that special use permit. Again, part of the standard process in the UDO with a straight rezoning. The Currituck County Stormwater Manual must be followed. All other applicable requirements of the county's code of ordinances must also be followed. It's all right there in the UDO in section 2.4.8 in subdivision standards. When I look at Barco area, and we're going to build houses, it'd be a single-family mainland, that's what the zoning is for, and we're near a school. If anyone has a suggestion of something else that would be more appropriate to build next to a school, I'd welcome it, but I think houses are probably one of the most appropriate things to build near a school. Now, keeping it a farm field and scenic vistas, that's great, and some of the adjacent landowners came, actually, two of them. Two ladies came, we spoke at Currituck Barbecue about it. We sat in the pavilion and just mostly chit-chatted, and they said, you know, we had owned this property some years ago, and our family had owned it for 200 years prior to that. You know, we're sorry to see it go, but we understand. I look at tonight, does anybody have the sign-up sheet of who's to speak tonight on this topic?
I have it, but nobody signed it, so.
That was my question. So, you know, we're going for a straight rezoning. We've met there, basically, the two people that owned property next to it, which were part of the Ambrose family and the Morris family. I got to meet Travis's, one of his daughters, and then talk with some of the Ambrose that I hadn't met before, and that was it. That's the community feedback I've had after all this. So to have asked a question and say, you know, conditional zoning provides for a more community-aligned process, there's nobody here. And there was real no process feedback when we had the community meeting even about what does somebody want? I don't want this, or we should do this, or would you please consider this? I'm just asking you to look at the data and realize this is a sparsely developed area. This is an opportunity for us to produce something that could be more affordable within the county, rather than $500,000 or $60,000 houses at the state line, and possibly provide something for Currituck County that has a median household income of $64,000 per household. This is the kind of area where we could possibly do something like that. We've got good access to Elizabeth City for shopping, because we don't have a ton of that here in Currituck. Down the street, there's a Dollar General going in, and there's a lot of mixed feedback about those kind of things as well. But, you know, we're putting something like that in, it's maybe two parcels to the south of that. We've got a lot of general business to the south of this, whether it be gas stations, Currituck Barbecue, right down pretty much to even some automotive pieces as well. There's just not much there, other than farm field and those pieces. So I'm not really seeing why we need conditional zoning, and I ask the question, what is it about the subdivision that is concerning? And what are the things that we need to put in the conditional zoning that someone's concerned about? And to this point, other than hearing, we want to make sure it complies with the land use plan. Well, isn't that part of the UDO process when we do major subdivision development? Do we not make sure it complies with that? We do. Well, we want to make sure it complies with the special use permit process. Is that not part of the UDO process for a major subdivision? It is, so we make sure it complies for that. What about stormwater? Again, part of the process. What about ordinances? And on and on and on. So doing conditional zoning and specifying that and having us do a preliminary design upfront that we have no iterative process, there's no TRC for that to get here to figure out, do the utilities fit, how does the stormwater work, where does Dominion want to run their easement, where's the IT infrastructure going to come in at? Dave Spence and Will from the Water Department, how do you want to bring the water lines in? How does this fit with the other easement here? How does this work with the stormwater stuff that, you know, the engineer has to design? None of that's there. We're just taking a shot at the dark, throwing something on a piece of paper as best we can, but we're not getting all those minds together to talk about it. And then when it's not right, we just go back to the process. It's not right, we go back to the process. It just doesn't make sense to me. And for this area, we're not building in something, an area that's sensitive, we're asking for something that I think is very appropriate to go near schools, as well as other pieces and be a bridge property. I just can't, I don't see the issue. And if somebody could help me see that issue, I could possibly be amenable to conditional zoning, but no one's giving me anything that's actually specific. That's why I'm asking for a straight rezoning to SFM.
All right. Well, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Miller while he's up there?
Looks like you got a question, Mr. Bass. You look like you have a question.
I just am trying to understand, and I understand what you're saying, that when you go with conditional rezonings, it's a lot of bureaucracy, a lot of red tapes you've got to deal with.
And if it makes sense, I'm all for it, but help me understand where it does.
And I want to make sure we're not comparing apples and oranges, and people on staff might be able to help me with this. Conventional rezoning, there was a statement about North Carolina law that was brought up earlier, and I want that to be, give me a little more details on that so I can understand. I just, you know, I'm hearing North Carolina law under conventional rezoning, I'm hearing bureaucratic rigmarole under conditional rezoning.
Okay.
And I want to understand.
Okay, well, where general statute comes in with the conventional zoning is that it does not allow a board or the applicant to place conditions on the rezoning.
Okay.
So he can offer that it's 80 lots, not going to cut down the trees, going to provide water access, but we can't make those conditions of approval.
Okay.
That's against the law in the state of North Carolina.
An approval for the rezoning.
And that's just here at that.
We can't turn a straight rezoning into a conditional rezoning by adding conditions on our own.
The conditional zoning, what that has is a conceptual plan. I'm not aware of a conditional zoning that has on it where your water lines are coming in and that specific detail. Generally, it's conceptual in nature. This is an approximation of where the homes are going to be. This is, we're offering these buffers, we're offering this water access and those kinds of things. And with a conditional zoning, that is a legal path forward because the general statutes allows you to put conditions on the conditional rezoning that you and the border commissioners, that the applicant and the border commissioners would agree to.
Let me ask you a question about what Ms. Glave said as well, though. You said we could put the water access feature in there, and we could draw in where it is. But if we adjust or move that water feature, make it a little wider, or make it a little longer, or decide, you know what, we can't put it here because of the water depth, is we need to shift it over, would that require going back to the process?
I would have to look at what you're saying to determine that, because it says if it makes a material change to the subdivision, a substantive material change to the subdivision, then it would go back to the process.
It doesn't say that, actually. I had it right here.
Would you like to read it to them?
Yeah.
You can read it to them.
It says, "The following changes."
All right, read above that, though.
Where does it say that?
In the paragraph above that, it talks about.
"...subdivisions for development within a conditional zoning district may include minor modifications from the approved conceptual plan, provided such modifications are limited to changes addressing technical considerations that could not reasonably be anticipated during the conditional zoning process, or any other change that has no material effect on the development. Changes in the following shall consist minor modifications that may be approved by the director." And those are the four that I read to you.
It doesn't say that those are the only changes that could be modified by the director. That just gives you a list of some of the things that can be modified by the director. For example, let's say, one of the things that frequently changes is the design of the stormwater pond. It needs to be larger, it needs to be relocated. That's something that doesn't materially affect, is not a substantial change to the development, it's not changing, let's say, the character of the development. So that is something routinely that the planning director can approve that's not listed in the example of the ones that were read to you. That's not an all-inclusive list there.
What I can tell you from a practical standpoint is the ones that I read off that, you know, a BMP affecting a lot line, other pieces like that, those are all ones that I've either been through or been part of being through and having to go back through the process because of that.
Yeah, shifts in lot lines would require.
So just because, yeah, you can make the BMP larger, that's fine, but if it changes anything as a process outside of that, you're not going back for the BMP, you may be going back because the sidewalk was going to fall in the water, and you've got to move the sidewalk, or you've got to change the lot line.
I think that's extreme, in my opinion. The UDO affords the planning director to make approvals that, however it says, are not, that don't materially affect the character of the approved development. And if you've got to shift a sidewalk, in my opinion, I can't speak for Kevin, but that's something that a planning director can change for you because there's, that's not materially affecting the character of the subdivision, to move a sidewalk a few feet away from a drainage pond.
And again, I'll go back and ask the question, why or what specifically do we have an issue with about a subdivision of this such that we need to place conditions on? And what are those conditions?
Yeah, I would answer that I can't answer that because I don't have a plan before me to tell you what would be the issues or extra conditions that would, thank you, that would need to be placed.
We have a design manual, and we have a very educated staff. I mean, Ms. Glave, you've been here for a number of years, right?
A few.
You know, Jenny's been here for a number of years. I know Kevin has a long history in Virginia Beach, even though, you know, it may be Chapter 2 for us, it was Chapter 10 for you, you know, in Virginia Beach. And we have, you know, Donna, who's been here, we have Jason, we have others as well. You know, we know what the design standards are, we know what, you know, you have to do, we know, a lot of us know what the setbacks and stuff, those pieces need to be. My point is, it's hard to go through all this technical stuff upfront and then go ask, can I rezone it? And then the other question is, well, say, well, go do a better job at it. Okay, well, we can go spend a couple hundred thousand dollars doing something like that and bring it forward, and then say, you know what, we're not going to approve your rezoning either. It just doesn't make sense to us in any way, shape, or form. And if it's something specific, you know, we've got two farm fields next door. We back up to the inner coastal waterway. Everything along the highway is GB, which is a much higher zoning and is a straight GB. So all the things that were listed, you know, the nightclubs, bars, pawn shop that could be put on this property, well, step over 100 feet to the right, step over 100 feet to the left, and you can still do the same thing. So, you know, if this is wrong, then all that's wrong, too. And we didn't rezone any of that. All that was put in place when the land use plans were done and when staff did that years ago. So I'm just really struggling with how conditional zoning is needed in this application. If this was going between a bunch of stuff and had a bunch of development around it and other things like that, other than just pretty much going in the middle of a field, I'm just struggling with it.
Well, I think we've cleared up that there's definitely some differences in the two with making it complicated, but did you have a question? Go ahead.
No, I really can sympathize, and I understand where you're coming from. I think, for me, what's out of your control is what the capacity issue is. And that, for me, is, from what I understand, and I don't know if this is right or true or not, but has Moyoc Elementary School and has Moyoc Middle School started construction on there? Has that moved forward? Ow, can you hear me?
Hi, I can provide an update. I just received this morning on that. Next week, we should have the 65% design stage for the middle school and elementary school additions. Those are still slated to be done August of 2023. And then we purchased the land for the new elementary school across from the library that is still on schedule for August 2025.
So, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that one of the but I thought that one of the approvals that we were sitting here for, and for me, I missed a couple in the meeting. So I thought the enlargement was supposed to start in this year. The, the construction for the Moyac Middle School, Moyac Elementary was supposed to start.
It is slated to start in January.
But it was supposed to start when? When was it supposed to start? See, you weren't here.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have that information. I'd be happy to find it for you.
That to me is, you know, I, I think what your, your argument with the conditional zoning, I happen to agree with you. My concern is what's out of your hand is when construction starts and what is slated already for the committed capacity. This is out of your hands because you don't know when the construction or when the enlargement of the schools are going to start, when the new school is going to be here. Even though they say that, we can always have delays.
I agree.
In the meantime, you can move forward with, again, you know, more, more capacity going into the school.
But again, it's not Moyac Elementary or Moyac Middle as well.
It's not, it's not. But again, they said Central is, is that the school that?
Yeah, Central in May had 24 available seats. We understand that. I don't know that the numbers have been officially released yet for this school year. That's something that Donna is working on this week. But the num, the attendance is higher than they had anticipated.
So for me, the, the, the one thing I'm concerned about is the capacity for the schools and the adequate facility.
He did say how many units he could get. Well, I think 90.
Right.
And I think for 80 houses, you'd be looking at 20 is basically what the calculation is.
For elementary school.
For elementary.
I have a question on this. Um, did you not say that part of the UDO would, you would have to actually get approval and throttle how many houses you could actually build based on capacity issues?
That's right, Mr. Hurley. In part of the process, you have, you go before the Board of Commissioners and it's in Section 3, Subparagraph 2. Board of Commissioners may place limitations on the timing and extent of the new development in accordance with Section 6.6, which is adequate public facility standards. So to your question, Ms. Graus, that, that's actually reviewed by the commissioners during the preliminary plat phase if we need to place those conditions on there because there are not adequate facilities. In timing with something that may be delayed or maybe they're not comfortable with performance, they really get to make that call as part of the UDO.
Let me ask you another question. A lot of what you said keyed on circling back and going through the process again. What does that entail? And what is typically like the financial burden of, of going back through the process again? And I, I don't know if I really understand or maybe that's something the staff can answer for me. But what does that entail versus if you had the other zoning? What are the differences in time, money, effort to do this?
It's, it's months. I mean, for every time you do it, it's months. I mean, because all these things were placed on schedule. And now we've even changed the schedule where you have to skip meetings. And Mark knows this better than me. I'm looking to him because a lot of times he does the heavy lifting when we get to that phase. I do to this phase and then I typically subcontract to an engineering firm to do it. But the meetings are sometimes such that you'll hit the planning board meeting, but then you don't hit the commissioners meeting because your submittal date is before you get your approval with planning board. Your submittal date for commissioners meeting is here. So now you actually miss a month. So it doesn't even go like September, October, November. It ends up going like September, November, January. And then you get it in the end of the year sometimes. And, you know, we're going to cancel the meeting because it's Christmas and we don't have a lot of people around. And so it's January, it gets tabled. So it, it, to go back to the process probably adds about three months? Four months? You know, every time you do that.
What is the time factor if you were to get the zoning that, in the way you mentioned? I mean, how, what is the time process there?
Then it's just like we're sitting down tonight and we're all at the table. And you say, you know, I got a problem with the schools, you know? I need you to throttle back a little bit. Can you do 20? You know, okay, that's maybe not a good example because that's the commissioners. But maybe, you know, I don't like what you got here for this easement or this feature. Can we make this change? Maybe you shift that lot over a little bit and put this in here to clean this up or otherwise, because the standard says you need to have so many trees and I need to see you get two trees in here. Okay, we just make the change. We send it back to you. You look at it, which would be like planning staff and they would say, yep, that meets it and we move forward. Otherwise, if that stuff has to shift, again, we go back and it's four months. So you, you got to be really good and none of us are that good. And I would expect to go back to the process two, three times? You know, on average, when we do that stuff? So what does it add to it? If it's four months every time we do it and we do it twice, that's eight months. You know, I mean, what does eight months cost you?
Is there, are we good on the accuracy of what's being discussed as far as the staff goes? I mean, is what we're hearing seem accurate in that regard?
What do you mean?
I mean, what, what's being presented here, is it, is it accurate?
I think there's some discrepancies in what would be required to go back through the board basis, what could be approved by the planning director. Generally, a conditional zoning is a conceptual plan. You're not nailed down to that very specific plan like moving an easement or shifting some things. I think that's, that's really the only discrepancy that I'm hearing.
Mr. Miller, did you say that Laurel Woods was a conditional? Was it a conditional?
It was conditional years ago, yeah. And it was a conservation subdivision.
What was your experience?
Again, we're talking a whole different, we're talking quite a different period of time. You know, that was conservation.
Yeah, conditional zoning.
Yeah, that's right.
This was close to 20 years ago, was it not?
When Laurel Woods went through.
Yeah.
So, and then Laurel, when did that finish up?
We ended up, well, after we had an economic crash of '07 or '08, '09, we ended up starting that in 2012 and finally building it out in, probably about 2017 we finished. And in that process, your school question actually came up because this, we had a similar discussion about this in 2007. And the phasing for that, and don't ask me why I remember this stuff, but it was 10 for year one was how many homes you're allowed to build and develop. And then year two went to like 30. And then year three was 40, and it was 40, and it was 40. And I remember coming to the commissioners in 2011 and standing, I don't know if it was this podium, but right about this spot and asking the question and said, nobody's building anything. And why do I have to have conditions on this for the schools? And they looked around in the room and they went, how many you want to build? I said, if there's no issue, why can't I just build them all? Because it was okay for me to build 10 in 2008 and 30 in 2009 and 40 in 2008. We're long past that. Can we just forget about this? And they said, yeah, go ahead. Because a lot of that school capacity stuff evaporated, you know, as economic things change. But that's a prime example of when that was done and how that can be done in a standard process.
Well, circling back, I know none of that probably answered your question, but you're, you're good.
No, I understand what he's saying. And I mean, I understand the concerns because what he's saying is under a conventional rezoning, there's still standards that you have to adhere to.
Right.
Absolutely. And if we had 15 people here saying, you know, I got a problem with this. I live next door to this. You know, I don't want these trees cut down. This is, you know, affecting this or this is that kind of problem. I think those are the kind of things that speak to these standards. And we write these standards so that we basically say, look, do whatever you want to do at home. I mean, that's what North Carolina is and that's why I really love the state. Do what you want to do in your house. But when you're doing something in your house that affects your neighbor next door, we need to talk. And that, to me, is when the conditional zoning piece commit. And we've, we've put the notices up. We've gone through the process. We've called for the meetings and nobody cared. So, you know, if we had people here who said, here's the problems I have with it, I'd work to address it, but I'm not getting any of that feedback.
All right. Well, does anybody else have any more questions right now for Mr. Miller?
Just one more.
Okay.
So what's been fed in so far is, does it kind of commit you to residential, as you were talking about, and the amount of lots? I mean, is that, or I guess if it were not to go conditional, would, you wanted to change and put a nightclub in?
I have to change the zoning. If it's SFM, single-family mainland.
That's it.
And you can look, it's what, Chapter 3 or 4? There's a big table and it tells you everything you can use, if you have to have a use permit and those things. And all that stuff you're talking about, like a nightclub?
Right.
That would have to be GB.
Rezoned again.
Right, and you'd have to be zoned for that.
Okay.
Well, there will, there will already be a general business zoning portion in the front that those users.
Which we're actually reducing. It's bigger now.
I, I get that. It was up front where, right along the road.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And again, everything up and down the corridor is general business and is available and for sale.
And I follow what you're saying about, you know, taking the trees down. And I, I know it is very costly and, and so, I mean, I get it. Why spend the money on that and leave nature as it is back there?
It, it has a lot of benefit to us.
Right.
I guess the only problem I have there is once you sell it, once the people move in, they could chop, cut.
Well, here's the thing right now. I can go in and cut the trees down right now.
I'm just saying, you wouldn't do that. But I'm saying, I mean, for.
But I'm struggling with what would the, what do you?
View.
I'm not sure what you're getting.
A view? A room with a view?
Yeah, I mean, but we also talk about making scenic vistas. So maybe it's better to cut the trees down, you know?
But is that not the conservation area? Is that not restricted or is that, is that part of the?
Only to trees.
It's a conservation area, which means we restrict development in it. We don't say you can't develop in it. We restrict development. What restricts that area is the wetlands.
Right.
Because almost 100% of everything that's in the trees is wet.
But is there not compliance for the wetlands? Whether you have to get approval to take trees down?
Sure.
You can cut, you can cut them down in the wetlands.
Very carefully.
Take stubs out.
Yeah, yeah. You need to put, you need to lay mats down. You need to command, you know, and you need to not disturb the soils.
You don't do that properly, you will still get in trouble.
Yeah, yeah. There'll be some fine at the end of it when you get done.
Okay.
There's KAMA and there's Army Corps and they do a good job policing that.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
All right, well, moving on. I think that's all the questions we have for you right now.
Do you have something else in here?
All right, thank you. Right now, I'll open the floor for public comment. If there's anyone here who out there wishes to speak on this, I know nobody signed up, but you're welcome to come on up at this time and state your name and address. All right, nobody? That's good. All right, we'll close the public hearing. Any question, any further questions or discussion? The only thing I see is it's labeled full service, which is the most intense thing the land use plan has. But that's, that's the land use plan. And that's the only comment I have on it. It would allow for, that's saying you want development in this area by somebody. If you all have any, any other questions, I'm going to open the floor for a motion.
I'm going to make a motion to approval, for approval. I move to approve PB 2117 because the request is consistent with the below land use plan policies. Policy HN1, Currituck County shall encourage developments to occur at densities appropriate for the location. Location and density factors shall include whether the development is within an environmentally suitable area, the type and capacity of sewage treatment available to the site, the adequacy of transportation facilities providing access to the site and the proximity of the site to existing and planned urban services. Neighborhood-serving commercial districts shall be encouraged to locate, and this is under policy CD1, where a collector or secondary street intersects with a street of equal or greater size. Appropriately designated small-scale businesses may also be near other neighborhood-serving facilities such as schools and parks. The request is reasonable and in the public interest because part of the property is designated as full-service in the land use plan. The land use plan indicates that the Barco Coin Jack Airport sub area has many of the ingredients in place to become a significant community center for the mainland.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
All right, we have, what's that, five and one? Motion passes and the next item. We have, are we good? Everybody okay to move on?
Okay.
Okay. Agenda item title PB 21-16, Currituck County Housekeeping Tax Amendment. Request to amend the Currituck County Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 2, to correct a reference related to minor subdivisions. Chapter 4, to correct terminology from use permit to special use permit. And Chapter 6, to correct a general statute reference for consistency with the GS 160D update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I almost just left the whole title off there.
I think that you actually just presented the whole, the whole, the whole amendment.
Did I read your part too?
No, no, no. It's just, it's just kind of simple and that's, that's what we're doing. So, yeah, so this is, in correcting a couple of, of issues that were not, or just minor text changes that were missed during the recent 160D update in Chapter 4, the terminology update, and Chapter 6, the general statute reference. We also noticed there was a reference incorrect in Chapter 2. And so we're addressing that reference to reference the correct section of the ordinance. Any questions on the text there? It's on your agenda packet, starting on page 33.
Does anybody have any questions on?
So.
No.
No, okay. So, staff recommends approval of this text amendment because it's consistent with the 2006 Land Use Plan Housing and Neighborhood Policy 8, and it is required by the changes to the general statutes 160D, the modernization of the entire body of state laws on local planning and development regulation. That's, that's all I have for you on that one.
All right, well, anybody have any questions for Jenny? Okay. Is anybody here to speak on this specific tax amendment? Okay. We'll open and close the public hearing. Any further questions? All right, hearing now, open the floor for a motion.
I move to recommend approval of PB 21-16 because the request is consistent with Policy HN8 of the 2006 Land Use Plan, and it is required by the recent changes to GS 160-D.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Give it to Gary.
Okay, Gary, you're at this time. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item is, item PB 2119, Outer Banks Ventures, Inc., Land Use Plan Amendment. Request to amend the future land use plan classification map from conservation to full-service designation on property located at the southern end of Monterey Shores Planned Unit Development adjacent to Malia Drive in Corolla. And Ms. Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again. This is a land use, requested land use plan amendment to the future land use map. The property is located in Corolla, adjacent to NC 12 and intersection of NC 12 and Albicore.
To the south is the Timbuktu Shopping Center. To the north, there's wastewater treatment plant property and some residential development that's part of the Monterey Shores Plan Unit Development. The property is zoned, single-family Outer Banks with a PUD overlay, a planned unit development overlay, which is, it's a legacy zoning district. Now we have PDs, not planned unit developments. And it's part of the Monterey Shores PUD and subject to the Monterey Shores approved, I mean amended sketch plan and special use permit for the entire development of Monterey Shores. The subject parcel is approximately, let's, 36 acres and currently 0.4 acres are designated as full service. 35.79 acres are currently designated as conservation. I'm going to go back real quick to the zoning map. So with the zoning, on this amended sketch plan currently, the parcel has approximate, a little over an acre of commercial designation on the property, as well as a little over, almost 35 acres of open space, reserve utility, open space on the parcel. And you can see here, this is from our GIS, the conservation and full-service area of the parcel. And, and these are the, the applicant submitted maps that clearly show the change, and I'll just show you here, the green area is the conservation area. I guess it's both green up there. It's brown down here. We'll call this brown and this green. So this is conservation in green. We're going to call this brown. This is the full-service area, and you can see that this is the request. And this particular request follows a certified wetland delineation line that's been surveyed and approved by the Army Corps of Engineers. And there's actually in your agenda packet. The Army Corps.
Page 51.
Map. Thanks, Jay. Our, Chairman Mounds, thank you.
You're, you're good. I prefer the first one.
And so, just a little bit of a, of background on this land use plan amendment. It is a legislative decision, which is why it's before you, before this board, similar to a text amendment application or a rezoning application. Land use plan map amendment, similar to the conventional zoning, may not have conditions associated with it. It's either approved or denied. And the way this particular land use plan application came about is the applicant, the owner of the property, applied for amended sketch plan use, special use permit for the Monterey Shores Plan Unit Development in order to develop the upland area of this parcel, of which there's already about an acre of commercial designated within the Monterey Shores PUD. And with that proposal, there's also a request for some density, some residential density, moving around the commercial designation for some commercial units with upper-story dwelling units. All in all, there was a total request of 36 dwelling units on the parcel. And in amending the amended sketch plan special use permit, that process does not come to this board. It's an evidentiary hearing, goes directly to the Board of Commissioners. But one of the requirements in that process is for the applicant to provide and the board to make findings of fact that the application is in compliance with, in conformity with the land use plan. And so, in reviewing that amended sketch plan special use permit, staff felt that this land use plan amendment is needed to move that application to the board so the board can make the finding, if they, if they do, that it needs to be amended so the board may make the finding that it's consistent when it comes to residential density in, you would not typically have residential density in areas designated conservation. It would need to be full-service or a different designation than conservation to, to pull the density. So the property is in the Corolla subarea. The policy emphasis in this area is to allow for predominantly medium-density residential with minimal commercial development arranged in clusters. And then in this PUD, in the, in the Monterey Shores PUD, an overall density of no more than three units per acre would be permitted. Make sure I covered everything. I will call your attention in the packet, on page 40, in the staff report, the applicants provided their statements of justification for the request. This is inserted into your staff report directly from the applicant's response, and Mr. Bissell's here tonight to represent the applicant. He can come up here in a moment when I'm finished. So staff. I'll give you a little bit of background on the future land use map and how it's used. In the 2006 Land Use Plan, typically the land use map is started with doing, using a land suitability analysis, which is various layers of different factors that can impact the suitability of the land for development. So for instance, there's wetland layers, there's flood zone layers, proximity to roads, primary streets, proximity to infrastructure, infrastructure available, and things like that. And that, those maps show areas in the county that are suitable for more, possibly more dense development. And so, in looking at, at some of those factors with this particular application, one of the, one of the biggest changes is that on this site, there actually is now currently a wetland delineation that shows that a portion of this site is uplands. And that portion that's upland is designated conservation currently on the land use plan, which is why they're requesting this change. Can I go back? Dead. Here's, here's the land use plan, land suitability analysis from the current land use plan. You can see the blue is least suitable and the orange is medium suitability. And the property is located in this area here. And if you zoom in on it, you can see that it's, it's got the blue where the wetlands are, and then it's got the orange, a medium suitability land where the proposed change is occurring. And then here is the, since we did reference this map in the staff report, this is the land suitability analysis from the Imagine Currituck Plan that has not yet been adopted. In this particular plan, the wetland delineation provided has been incorporated into these maps, so we had better data for this parcel, so we used it. We don't always have parcel-specific data for all the factors that are involved. And then here is just a zoomed-in area of, you can see the proposed land use classification. Here's Albacore Street here. This burgundy, isn't it showing up burgundy there? Reddish is the mixed-use center and corridors. So that would be where your, would be similar to a full-service designation in the current land use plan. And this shows it zoomed in a little bit, and you can see the wetland area here, Timbuktu to the south.
So the request tonight, if it were approved, would, would be simply making it match the Imagine Currituck one?
It would, yes.
Sorry to interrupt.
Well, I mean, the, the area, it's, it's a different name of classification, but it's very similar, yes. So similar to the text amendment review standards, these are the review standards that the board may consider in determining whether to adopt or deny this proposed land use plan amendment. If it's consistent with the goals and, of the land use plan and required by change conditions, demonstrates a community need, results in a logical and orderly development pattern, and it would not significantly, would not result in significantly adverse impacts on the natural environment. Staff suggests that the, this future land use map amendment is consistent with the 2006 Land Use Plan because the policy emphasis for the Corolla subareas to allow for predominantly medium-density residential with minimal commercial development and arranged in clusters. And the request will allow for potential commercial or mixed-use development in an existing commercial center in Corolla. And full-service designation and commercial development are located to the south. Water and sewer available. The property is in close proximity to NC 12. And an Army Corps certified wetland delineation indicates that the area proposed for full-service designation does not contain wetland areas. And staff recommends approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
So the only reason why it wasn't included in development was because it was originally thought to be wetlands? Or why was it, why was that parcel left out? I mean, was it originally thought to be?
Was it classified conservation?
The what, the layers. It's not just that, but there were multiple layers. The data that was used in the 2006 Land Use Plan showed it as, as wetlands. That's one of the reasons. I can't say that's the only reason.
They use a state soil map and satellite pictures, stuff like that.
Some of the other factors, in case you're interested in what, what went into the land suitability analysis, I have to put my hands on it here, in 2006. Coastal wetlands, all kinds of wetlands, estuarine waters, protected lands, beneficial non-coastal wetlands, storm surge areas, soils with limitations, septic limitations. That's probably another reason why it was on the, the conservation, because the soils are not good in that area for septic. Flood zones, at the time, it was entirely inside the flood zone. Now, it's kind of split by the flood zone. And proximity to significant natural heritage areas. Proximity to developed land, primary roads, and water and sewer.
Is the land used for anything right now?
There's not a, the pond is there, and the, it is not, there's no really use of the property currently.
No, like, you don't know if it really floods or not, I mean that.
There's no infrastr, there's no, there are no buildings on the property or any uses like that. But the pond is used for stormwater and, and it, we have an easement, the county has an easement to discharge of the Whalehead groundwater lowering into the pond. We have an easement.
Have there been any environmental studies with the wetlands out there, or is that basically what that consists of?
I'm only aware of the determination, the delineation. I'm not aware of any other wetland studies. Mr. Bissell may be able to speak to that.
Anybody else have any questions? All right. All right, well, is there anybody here to present tonight? Mr. Bissell, is that you?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I think this one.
All right, well, I'm sure they have it, but could you state your name and address for the record?
All right, Mark Bissell, and it's 3512 North Currituck Highway Kitty Hawk. Thank you. How are you all doing tonight?
Doing good.
Just let me know when you want to advance the slide.
Oh, okay. Yeah, let's go ahead and, actually, I've got the same slides that you had. But what I wanted to do first was to just kind of talk about what's around the property. If you see, and I don't think I have a pointer available, do I?
Yeah, I could try to mouse over that for you.
To the south, you have Timbuktu and the, which is the existing commercial and mixed-use development. To the east, you have the miniature golf, or the mini-golf that Israel has, and you have the, you have a number of commercial buildings there, including Wings and Ace Hardware and Stan White Building, and those kinds of things. Across the street, you have the Monterey Plaza Shopping Center. And to the northeast, you have the existing wastewater treatment plant and the, and a water tank and some various other utility uses. You also have the Monterey Pines condominium development in that place that says residential use. So those are the 36, I believe, no, 48, I think, residential units. Before you go to the next slide, this is showing that wetland delineation that Jenny mentioned earlier. I just wanted to point out how that actually lines up and in fact matches the delineation that was done for Timbuktu. And so the, really, it's a continuation of that suitable land use to the, to the north. You can also see that the land is practically surrounded on three sides by commercial development and utility development. And I can tell you that the, that the land, the soils, the main characteristics of this land are very similar between this tract and, or this portion of tract that we're calling for development, in the Timbuktu tract, the mini-golf tract, and so forth. There were a lot of comments and questions, and you know, we, we did submit along with the request, a, and maybe we should get to that first, to a preliminary land use plan. And, you know, we're not at this point asking for approval of the land use plan, or of this site development plan, but we did want to show you, we're just trying to be transparent on what we are proposing for the site. And, and what you're, what you're seeing here are 36 residential units, which is about one unit per acre for, for the site. It's a 36-acre site. And we're proposing a restaurant that would have a big outdoor deck with some outdoor entertainment potentially, with a connecting walkway that would go to, potentially to a, a boat dock where people could maybe drive their, or bring their boat over from the mainland and dock and have a bite to eat, go to Timbuktu to, to do some shopping and, and go back. So that's kind of the, the concept. We have access to the site on Malia Drive to the north. And we're also proposing to access the site through the DOT right-of-way, which was the, and what she's pointing to there was the original bridge landing site that DOT had acquired back 20, I think it was 22 years ago that was acquired. And then they decided not to land the bridge there. They moved it farther north. But DOT still has that, and they currently lease that land to, to Bill Grandy, who operates the seaside market, which you can see in the, in the bottom right, right there. So that's the, the Grandy Market. And, and we're, and we're coordinating with Bill, and you know, right now, there's a, there's a bit of a traffic jam there in, in the peak season. Is there, you know, the, and if you can go to the slide before this, this is what I wanted, there have been some questions and comments about, you know, how will this affect the, the farm market there, the seaside market? And we actually think it'll be a benefit because right now, there's this kind of an area that's, there's no striping, there's no curb bumpers. This, this is actually a plan that was approved by Currituck County 23 years ago, I believe it was, for the, for the use of, of that as, as a farm market. And it showed this area that, that goes, that you see where the proximate edge of, of parking is shown. Well, that is just kind of a free-form parking area, but it was, the way it's, because it's not, there's no striping, there are no curb stops, there's no real delineated travelway through it. And so what we're proposing to do is to actually better delineate that travelway, which you're seeing in, in yellow, and, and provide striping and provide curb bumpers so that people can see where the parking is. And not only that, but provide a way for trucks to, to be able to go past it and turn around and come back, because right now, it's just kind of all jumbled up in there. And, and what will be even probably the greatest benefit is for people to be able to have a second way out, where they can actually go through the site, if we can go back to that next slide, and come out at Malia, so you can have kind of traffic circulating through the site, rather than people trying to get in and out the same way, trying to park, people backing out, trucks trying to unload, and so we think that we can help solve that problem. trying to park, people backing out, trucks trying to unload, and so we think that we can help solve that problem. This is just kind of a broader overview of the site. This shows the whole thirty-six acres. The previous slide was just a close-up on the portion of it that's being proposed for development. You do see that where we're proposing the boat docks out there is actually, what you're looking at around that is a four-foot contour. So there's actually been soundings done that show that that is where the water is actually deep enough to to dock a boat and get in and out. So, you know, we've provided a number of arguments as to why this is a reasonable request. It does support uses that are suitable and compatible with adjacent and surrounding development. We have adjacent commercial development. We have three sides of full-service land use classification already. We are adjacent to existing commercial. We're part of an existing mixed-use hub. We can go to the next one. There's a question about public need, you know, if you ever try to go out to eat in this time of year, you know there's a need for an additional restaurant, there's a need for additional housing, there's a need for additional entertainment, and people are always looking for additional recreational opportunities. And we're proposing, I didn't mention earlier, we're proposing a paddleboat operation as well as part of this. And of course, this outdoor entertainment venue and the boat basin will provide some of those opportunities that are hard to find right now. We are not aware that this would have any adverse effect on adjacent or nearby properties. Adjacent properties are commercial and utility uses. The amendment will provide for compatible commercial and mixed-use development in this area that's really a commercial hub. There's no excessive or burdensome use of existing public facilities. As I mentioned, the streets will be looped to accommodate traffic. No impacts to county schools are anticipated. And we are proposing pedestrian connectivity through the site and down Malia Drive to Ocean Trail, also connecting over to Albocore Street, where there's an existing public pedestrian right. Existing utilities are there to the site and available to serve it.
Oh, next one, already?
It's compatible with the Corolla sub-area policy emphasis, which proposes medium-density residential development not to exceed three units per acre. We're proposing one unit per acre. It calls for commercial development to be arranged in clusters, which is exactly what we're doing, putting some additional commercial development. Our commercial development component is only 1.2 acres out of the thirty-six, but it's adjacent to the main commercial development of Monterey shores. As far as the land suitability analysis, and Jenny actually, I think, mentioned most of these things already, but I'll just run through them again. The land is not a wetland. And, you know, back to the question of, you know, why was this designated conservation to begin with? You know, I think that a lot of the time, when the map in 2006 was developed, it was kind of a high-level overview of the area, rather than a site-specific view like what we're doing now. So it's not a wetland, and the lands, these are the main criteria for, that you would use for determining whether or not this land should be considered conservation. But if it's a wetland, perhaps it should be conservation land, but it's not. It's generally not in the flood hazard area. It has not been classified as a storm surge area. It does have soils that are suitable for development. And it is adjacent to existing water and sewer lines, so it really makes sense. It's consistent with a number of land use plan policies. Policy PA-1, which calls for public access to the sound. And we are proposing to provide sound access. PA-2, the county supports access to the water. And if you look around, there aren't that many opportunities to access the sound in that area. Policy HN-1, densities are appropriate for the location. Policy HN-3 is to encourage open space developments and compact mixed-use developments, both of which were proposed here. And then this is just a, this isn't part of our application here, but this is just kind of an artist's rendering of what this might look like. This is showing the proposed restaurant looking across the pond with a pedestrian walkway there. And then to the, to the left, that walkway would continue out to the sound, to the boat dock. So I think this is reasonable and in the public interest. And I would ask for your support, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Bissell. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Bissell?
And I don't, maybe Jenny or staff can answer. I don't know if, some of the things that were raised as concerns are appropriate at this time with the rezoning? Are they more appropriate with the development?
So this isn't a rezoning, this is a land use map amendment. So it's currently conservation, and the request is to amend the land use plan map to full service. Things that you can consider now are the review standards, as well as the land suitability analysis factors and things like that, as to should this land be designated as full service. Some of the other impacts will be reviewed during future applications.
Okay. So just to-
And could I jump in there by way of part, maybe continuing to answer your question? I just, and I meant to do this earlier, to talk about the process, because we're on early step one of a multi-step process to get this thing approved. So after we go through the land use plan amendment process, if that is successful, we will be going through a sketch plan amendment for Monterey shores for the overall PUD, along with a special use permit that amends that plan. And if that's successful, then we'll be coming back with a more site-specific development plan, which will again go through a special use permit hearing. In fact, there are three item components of the development that will have to have a second special use permit after the sketch plan amendment is done, and that is the residential development. When we're doing a preliminary plat, that will have to have a special use permit. The outdoor entertainment has to have a special use permit, and the outdoor recreation has to have a special use permit. And if all those are successful, then we'll be coming back through with actual construction drawings for, at staff review. So we're at the first of many steps.
So some of the points that were brought up were the land use plan criteria, stormwater management, and impervious lot coverage, setbacks, parking spaces, traffic management, pedestrian traffic, and community amenities. Are none of those applicable in this portion of what we're doing?
I'm not going to say that they're not applicable to consider those things as you're reviewing this request. But specifically, how that will be implemented on the site will come at a later, at a different decision.
Okay, I was glad to hear about the traffic management, because that's, you probably know that area pretty well right now. There's some R S turns in there, and it's tough to pull out. It really is when the traffic gets heavy, because you have such a short vision point at some of those points, especially the one end where the seafood market is coming from the other direction. And that's, that light can get very busy at times. So to hear that, you could actually relieve some traffic through there, and hopefully that stays that way.
Right.
Because otherwise, it will, it will, it will get bound up pretty good, otherwise.
And we have also engaged a traffic engineer to advise us on the next stage of it.
On this slide, there's a structure at the, structures at the bottom, looks like three structures. What are they?
These?
Yes.
Oh, those are commercial buildings. They will have, if you've ever been to the shops, the waterfront shops at Duck, we're looking for that kind of, in effect, where the, where you have these shops along the waterfront with a, with a walkway on the water side of the shop. And then they would have, six of the thirty-six dwelling units are upper-story dwellings. It would be above this.
Okay.
That would be primarily for employee housing.
What is the distance? That's Timbuk II you back up to right there. What is the distance that's left? It looks like there's some undeveloped area between those structures and the structures in Timbuk II. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that still wide enough for a vehicle?
Well, we're going to be actually creating a roadway there.
Oh, good. Okay, all right. Because that was one of the concerns, is access in the case of a fire.
Right. So we would actually need to be able to accommodate a fire truck to these new buildings, so.
Excellent.
That would also be behind Timbuk II.
They're showing here, too, for fire truck access, a turnaround.
Okay, very good. Now, I'm presuming even a, probably a hydrant at that point to use off the pond as well.
We haven't really figured out if we're going to use a dry hydrant, but we certainly would have a
Right.
A fixed hydrant at the end of that.
Into this project, you know that there's already one troublesome area of the drainage. And of course, that's being repaired now. You know what I'm talking about, at the one end of the pond?
I do.
Where the pump in the pond is used to, for irrigation and watering the grass across the street. And there was a, I think, when the golf course went in, some things went awry. And that all became badly eroded, you know, and deteriorated, and all that soil that disappeared in that large cavern of, ended up in the pond. I presume a lot of that trouble, and what caused that trouble, will be corrected in this development?
Well, the pot, the pipe, as I understand it, is being relocated so that it would be more along the property line that's between our proposed roadway access there off of Malia and the
Is it right here, Mark?
Israel's property line?
Is it right here, Mark?
Yes.
Okay.
But the, that pipe actually drains the shopping center across the street, and it also drains the the condominium development on the other side of Malia. It doesn't actually drain anything on this site.
Not deliberately.
Right, well, yeah.
Okay.
So all of our stormwater will go into the existing pond, and the, my client has already made some improvements at the end of that pond to improve the way the water is channeled out of the, out of the pond. It was kind of free-form before, and he's installed a new outlet device there.
Let me just note that this was, this was submitted as part of the application, and I apologize, this did not get in your packet. So let, if you have any questions about this, let me know. I just, right here, I'll just go over it real quick, just so you know where all the dwelling units are coming. These are townhomes. There are twenty-four of those, twenty-five? There are five lots here. Twenty-five townhomes, five single-family dwelling lots, and then three commercial buildings here with two dwelling units above. This is what's proposed in the amended sketch plan. A restaurant, and then this deck area is being proposed as outdoor recreation venue. And that's what he's mentioning about, in the future, if the amended sketch plan is approved, then there would be a use permit for establishing outdoor recreation and entertainment-type uses. They require another use permit in this particular zoning district. So just wanted to go over that. And then you saw the walkway and boat area. My apologies on that.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Well, you had a question earlier about soils, scientists.
Yeah, I'm-
Checking the soils.
So on that other side there, each one of those single-family dwellings could have a pier out to the water, correct? Each one of those?
Theoretically.
They can?
They could. I don't know of any restriction against that.
Okay, I'm just wondering, because when you go up to Monterey shores, most have piers out to the water.
The other thing that's on here is a, is a outdoor pool and kind of recreation area for the, which is primarily for the townhomes. We would assume that the single-family lots would probably have their own pool. But anyway, that's, that's a different application, but we at least wanted you to see what we're talking about.
At this current time, that's pretty close to what you guys were thinking?
It is.
Yeah, okay.
To go further on what you were asking earlier, to get him to clarify that, because he probably can better than wetland delineation, the soil people that go out there, they actually check the quality of the soil in part of that process?
They look for three things, which is hydro soils versus non-hydro. Separation to the water table, in other words, hydrology, and they look for vegetation. And you need all three of those elements to be present in order for it to be a wetland. Hydro soils.
So they, they pull samples, they check soil types, that sort of thing?
Is everything planned on being on pilings, even the small housing?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else?
I'm not positive about that for the townhomes. The townhomes may be on a raised slab. I don't think that's been decided.
Well, I think that kind of led itself to the soil questions. And everything, everything in there is going through the water and sewage that's available right there, right?
It is, and you've got a commitment letter for
Looks like a good plan.
Sewer capacity that's been set aside in Monterey shores plant.
Does anybody else have any, any questions for Mr. Bissell? Before you go, but I think my question would be more directed to Jenny. If, if the change was not made, and it stayed conservation, given the wetland delineation and everything, what can they build on it? What, one house? Is it, render it unbuildable completely?
So in this particular zoning district, the SFO with PUD overlay, it's subject to the sketch plan, the amended sketch plan, which is the plan that lays out development within the community. And in order to develop residential units, you have to have density that's assigned through that process. Currently, to my best recollection, this property does not have any residential density associated with it. Is that correct, Mark? Okay. So they have an area designated as commercial on the property currently. They could, they could develop that as commercial. I don't, there's not much-
There is residential density available in the PUD. It just hasn't been allocated to this site, and that's part of the amended sketch plan process.
That's what they're requesting, is the residential density.
Okay. So the conservation designation doesn't mean it's completely unbuildable. It just means you're not going to get any kind of density whatsoever out of it.
I think the conservation, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it would suggest a density of one unit per three acres, which would mean probably twelve units for the site. for, for the site.
Marking it conservation is, I guess where I'm going. Marking it conservation doesn't mean that it's not going to get built on.
Correct. And we already have the 1.2 acres of.
There's, could still be something built there.
Just wanted to move it around and make it, put it in a more suitable location.
Just makes it a little more orderly. Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. Well, I'll now open the floor for public comment if there's anyone here that wishes to speak on this item.
My name's Andrew Kraus. I am against this development plan for a number of different reasons. First and foremost, this is a wetland. It's all marsh right there, even going into the woods. It's wet back there. It's all, I think it's, it's most definitely considered wetlands. And the reason why it's so important not to develop this, this area is because, first of all, the, the SAV right in front of the property is, is very thick. It's, it's very thick vegetation. What SAV stands for is submerged aquatic vegetation. And it's, it's very predominant in that area. And the tundra swans use that area right in front of, right in front of there to winter and feed. So I, I find it to be very important. And all the runoff from the development goes into the sound and destroys the SAV. So it's, it's a, it's a subject that nobody talks about. You know, you know, any development on the sound, it, it, it's all a contributing factor to the decrease in the SAV. And the SAV is, is so important, nobody talks about it. It's, it's, it, like the whole ecosystem relies on the submerged aquatic vegetation. You know, just like the sea oats on the dunes, how they protect all the, you know, all the water and the erosion, the SAV protects the land from erosion as well. Currituck County loses 70 acres of marsh every single year. And, you know, this would just be another reason why, you know, Currituck loses more, more marsh because of more development. You know, all the runoff from the water is terrible for the water quality, all the development. It's, 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 it's not good and there's a study done by East Carolina in 20, in 2020 last year, or two years ago, that was conducted. It's 149 pages long. It's called Project Save Currituck Sound. And, and it talks about the SAV. It goes in depth about the SAV. I wish I had copies of it. It's a ginormous PDF file. It talks about SAV. It talks about the surrounding development and how it's so, it's so bad for the water quality for the Currituck Sound. And, you know, the, you know, the SAV right particularly on this piece of property, it's called Sanders Bay. And the, the SAV in Sanders Bay is, is very, it's very thick. And if this development goes through, you know, I would say in a couple of years that the SAV would, would, would disappear. So, and, you know, everything relies on the submerged aquatic vegetation. That's, that's my opinion. It's a subject that nobody, nobody discusses. But I just thought I'd, I'd bring it up and, and talk to you guys about it.
You see, SAV you're talking about along the sound?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe I didn't look at it close enough, but isn't there the, the conservation wetlands are pretty good sized chunk of land before it gets the sound, right? I don't think that's being disturbed. So you believe that the, the solid ground area where they are developing is still going to have an effect through the, the conservation area to the SAV?
Most definitely. Most definitely.
And what type of wildlife did you say was popular to that spot?
Tundra swans. Yeah, the big white, white tundra swans, also ducks. Everything relies on SAV. You know, the erosion, the erosion factor is, is the reason why all the marsh is disappearing. If you look on Google Earth from even 10 years ago on this piece of property, you can see how the marsh is just slowly eroding away. And before you know it, you know, with development right there, there, there won't be any marsh to be.
Who did the study you were talking about?
East Carolina University.
Okay.
Yep.
And what was it called?
Pro, save, Project Save Currituck Sound. Very interesting. It goes really into depth. Talks about the bridge. It talks about not only, you know, developing on wetlands, but, you know, all the water coming, you know, all the water coming off the fields, it has, it, it all ends up in the sound. So which therefore, all this runoff is, you know, contributing factor to, you know, poor water quality. And with poor water quality, the SAV can't grow. And if the submerged aquatic vegetation can't grow, then you have erosion. So it, it, like, like I said previously, you know, I've did, I've done a lot of research about it. It's very fascinating to me. You know, I don't consider myself a tree hugger by any means, but, but I feel like it's very important and, and nobody, nobody ever, nobody talks about it. So I, I think this, this piece of property is, is very important not to develop because, because of those factors. The erosion, you know, I guess it was already, it's already conservation easement or, I'm, I'm not sure, but there's a, there's a reason why, you know, it shouldn't be developed. And there's a reason why all the ducks and swans go to that area is because there's no development right there.
Well, you have Timbuktu right next door.
Right, there is.
Right.
But.
And is that aquatic vegetation now gone from Timbuktu?
Yeah. Yeah, right there.
So you're telling me behind Timbuktu?
Not, yeah, not only because of Timbuktu, well, because of the development, but also because of the jet skis. All the jet skis is terrible for the SAV. And I, I'm not sure what they plan on doing with the property. I'm sure they plan on putting a bunch, a bunch of docks and, you know, he was talking about, you know, you could ride your boat up there and, and, you know, there's plenty of other spots in the sound where you can ride your boat and, you know, ride your bike along Corolla and, you know, you have the Whalehead Club. You know, you can go to Crowa, you can go to Duck. That part of the sound is so important. You know, the Currituck Shooting Club marsh is, is such an important habitat for, for the sound. It's, it's, it's really important for the wildlife and the erosion. You know, all that marsh protects, protects that side of the sound. So.
And what did you say, Currituck Shooting Club?
Yes.
Are you a member with them?
No, no, of course not. But I don't even think they're active anymore. But when I mean Currituck Shooting Club, like at one time, they owned all that marsh right there near, you know, the northern part of Poplar Branch. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any, any more questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anybody else?
My name is Carla Gazola and this is Marsha Hornstein. And we are on the Board of Directors for the Timbuktu Shopping Center. It's totally up to you whether or not you approve or disapprove. But I do want to say that the parking is an intense problem and the runoff, the water runoff is an intense problem. Because when that shopping center, the Timbuktu Shopping Center was put in, although on the plans, it showed four areas for runoff, unfortunately, it was put in, I'm going to say, they had areas where it should have gone, but they were never followed through. Right, Marsha, the French drains?
A lot of grading. The grading goes nowhere. And we found out by accident when one truck went over the grading going into a parking lot, cracked it. We had some professional come in and said, this goes nowhere. You could just fill this in.
So it's never.
So the drains don't really necessarily mean they're drains. And I think, I think just from an anecdotal point of view, we've had our shop in, in Timbuktu and we've been in Corolla since 1991. We have seen tremendous changes, not only in the physical properties of Corolla, but in some of the people that come to visit. So when they can't find a parking spot, they let you know. They let you know in disgusting ways. And we've had to redo all the parking, parking lot lines to make larger lines because of the SUVs. And I would have to say that the police are in the Timbuktu Shopping Center at least once a day for a fender bender. And just the other day, well, just about two weeks ago, some lady accidentally hit the gas instead of the brake, drove up on the sidewalk, took out the crate metal and hit the handicap access ramp. So I've noticed changes in the way people behave. But the other thing that I noticed is the amount of water that gets built up underneath building one and building two, which are the two largest buildings in Timbuktu. They literally go underwater. And it doesn't have to be a hurricane. It could just be two or three days of rain. The other day I drove up to Corolla with Carla and I made a left turn to go and we were coming from the south, going north. And I said, what, what happens? In a pipe break, there's a tremendous amount of water sitting there. And the girl at the group who said, no, it rained last night. It had not rained in Duck. I didn't realize it rained in Corolla. But you should not have that much runoff with no place to go. And the other thing having to do with the size of the houses, when we first moved here, you could buy a four bedroom house and that would just be fine. Most of the houses in Corolla now are six to eight bedrooms, which means they have people to rent the house because it's so much money. Which means instead of two cars in front of that house, you now have four to six cars in front of that house. And when you build a house, I don't know how much space you're required to have for a driveway, but it probably needs to be looked at. Because we certainly don't have enough parking in Timbuktu. We pay for parking for Mr. Johnson because he's on the south side of the Timbuktu Shopping Center. And we pay North Carolina Department of Transportation money to rent part of the produce stand area, so we have parking.
That was one of the reasons that we were speaking, because we were talking about where that farm market is and the parking on that side. Timbuktu pays end up for the use of that parking lot. So.
So we're not, we're not for or against.
Yes, we're just, we're just saying take very seriously.
Sure.
The parking, the runoff, the use of the land. And we know that Barbara Mazzetti and the Corolla Civic Association sent a letter, whatever she has in the letter, which I have read, so I do know, take it very seriously because she, she takes what she does incredibly seriously and she's also on the board of Timbuktu. So we're just saying be very careful in making your decisions and not saying don't approve, but maybe looking carefully at what you're going to allow in, so that you take into consideration what this young man was saying also in terms of the development impacting. Because whether it's designated as a wetland or not, he's right. It, it is marshland. Okay? So maybe go up there, look around, I don't know. But just, you know, really.
Do it on a Saturday and see.
But, but, you know, you, because, and, and the other thing is too, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I know, because as she said, it's like 1991 and built in the Timbuktu Shopping Center in 1993. And we've been hearing about the bridge coming, it's coming, it's not coming, it's coming, it's not coming, whatever. But if and when it ever does come and wherever it does come, I think has to be factored in in terms of the overall complexity of the traffic plan.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for these two ladies? Mr. Bissell, could, could you maybe shed some light on the questions everybody has?
Do my best.
All right. Thank you.
You know, regarding the question of wetland, you know, we have an approved wetland delineation and I'll stand by that.
Well, I guess the question would be, do you think what's going to happen on the project here is going to help improve what they were referring to and what he was referring to?
Can we go back to the site plan for a minute?
Stormwater runoff and whatever they were talking about, parking and drainage.
One of the, you know, advantages that we have here over what they have at Timbuktu is that we have an existing five or six acre lake that will serve as a wonderful BMP for stormwater management. You know, and, you know, in terms of impacts of the runoff from this development on SAVs, I don't claim to be an expert on SAVs, but the county is pumping up to 5 million gallons a day from Whalehead into this pond right now. And Carolina Water Service is pumping between one, up somewhere between one and two million gallons a day of water into this pond from across the street. And I think, you know, and if you look at this, we are only actually covering a fraction of the upland, which is a fraction of the total land. And to me, if, just as logically, the amount of runoff that we're going to be contributing to this pond is a drop in the bucket compared to what's already going in there. So if there's going to be an impact, I don't see that we're going to significantly exacerbate what's already happening.
So I know you can't control.
And we can't control marsh erosion, but if you look at this, you know, we have a significant wetland buffer between this development and the sound.
But you're.
And in addition to that, we're of course, we even, and we can't even put our lot lines up to, we have an additional buffer to the wetlands to the, from the development.
You're going to make all efforts to make this entire site drain into the pond?
We will.
And not out into the sound?
We'll filter the water before it goes into the pond.
To speak on, on these two ladies' concerns with the parking and stormwater runoff, is that, is it?
So the stormwater runoff.
Drainage out of your parking lot you, you're concerned about?
About impact of this property on your lawn?
No, I, I, well, no, well, we're, well, yes, to a certain extent, but just.
If our runoff will be away from your property.
But just in terms of, to make sure that whatever, this is a little difficult for us to see, you know, but whatever they are presenting, that there is adequate parking that they have already worked in, okay? Because there's no extra, in other words, you know, if he doesn't have adequate parking and they want to come to Timbuktu, we don't have enough for the people that want to come to us. So it would seem to me that the Board of Commissioners, the Planning Board, whatever, should ensure because years ago, they did not ensure that there was enough parking for the Timbuktu Shopping Center. So now if we're going to allow other stuff in, which whoever owns that property should have the right to develop that property, but let's make sure that there is enough parking for the number of single family houses, the number of townhouses, the restaurant, the entertainment, whatever they're bringing in, okay? And that there are places in terms of, you know, not like what happened at Timbuktu where it looked superficially as if there was the area for the runoff, okay? Maybe when somebody came to check. It looked as if it had been taken care of, but in fact, it had not, okay? So let's make sure that in the developments, there's enough for, that it's, you know, they're going to be able to take care of their own runoff, so that their runoff won't come to our runoff, which has nowhere to go.
Do you happen to know what your parking ratio is at Timbuktu?
No, it's terrible. I just based that on observation.
I, I do know the calculations for parking are. I do know the calculations for parking are probably considerably different now than they were when Timbuktu was done. And I, there's extensive calculations that go into what parking slips are required for certain-sized buildings and that sort of thing.
The very first building was our building, and there was a restaurant in it, and we were required to have 14 parking spots.
And that may be different now, I don't know.
The third building, all of a sudden, it's community, it's a planned urban.
Because it was a pub, so then I think it changed because it was.
I mean, you had less parking spots in front of your building than you did a couple of years before that.
Well, anyway, do you think your development's going to be able to kind of help their situation a little bit?
We certainly, I don't think will harm their situation.
Not going to add to it.
I think we can, we're certainly going to address our own runoff and not impact them. We're going to address our own parking and not rely on Timbuktu to provide parking for our facilities. We're hoping to provide adequate facilities on, parking facilities on site. We are providing visitor parking here for the, for the townhomes and so forth. And so I think we've got it covered.
All right. Anybody else got anything right now? We can come back to it. I think we're good right a second. Did you have something else you'd like to add?
For the runoff, the runoff.
Can you come back up to the microphone so we can hear you?
So to address the runoff, you know, the runoff's going to go straight into the sound. You know, you can say you can pump it into the pond, but, you know, even if you do technically, in theory, pump it all into the pond, where does all this runoff go to? It all ends up out in the sound right out, right out in front. And then therefore, going back to the SAV, destroys the SAV, destroys the marsh, more erosion. And then you have more, you know, runoff issues from there. So, you know, you can say that you have the runoff issue under control, but, you know, I don't, I disagree, so.
Thank you. All right. Do we have anybody else that'd like to speak on this? See a couple other faces out there just been hanging out. Everybody, all right? I'll close the public hearing. Does anyone have any other further discussion questions, anybody? All right, hearing done, I'll open the floor for a motion. Well.
I'll make a motion.
All right.
I'm going to move to deny PB 21-19 Outer Banks Ventures Land Use Plan Amendment because the request is not consistent with the land use plan because the area is designated conservation in the future land use map. And requested amendment will allow more intense development in an area outside existing pool service designation.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
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 So what have we got there? Three, three to three? All right, so what, we've been through this a couple of times, and I always forget. What is a tie?
It goes forward as a recommendation of denial, since there was not a majority.
All right, then, then that's what it is, because.
Since the, since the motion did not pass, wouldn't it go forward with a recommendation for approval? Since the motion for denial didn't pass?
I think he's right.
That could be true.
I think the last time we did that, it went forward.
So which one is it? So I would believe Mr. Bissell may be correct on that.
I think this happened once before, and it moved forward.
What we can do is just take it forward with a tie vote, and then we can clarify that when we have the rules of procedures.
I can pull them.
Okay.
They're on the Currituck County website, under the planning.
Yeah, if you go to the rules of procedure, then we can, we can do that. You could very well be there.
Regardless of one way or the other, there, we're going to send it forward as a tie. And just leave it to the commissioners to know that the planning board tied six to, six people, three to three. But I would assume that Mr. Bissell is probably correct.
Either way, it's a tie.
If a motion to approve a request receives a tie vote, then the motion fails as it did not receive the majority of the votes and the request is denied. Likewise, if a motion to deny a request receives a tie vote, then the request is denied as it did not receive approval by the majority vote. Or to deny.
It's a denial.
Okay. I'd still like to make a note that it was a tie.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
All right, well, with that, that was the only items we have tonight, so. Does anybody have any announcements?
Chairman, I'd just like to make a couple, if I could. You were talking about other faces in the audience. One face sitting there behind Mark wanted to introduce one of the newest members of our planning staff. That is Anna Cherry. We are very happy to have her on board. She's a recent graduate from University of North Carolina, and she will be on our code enforcement team, and is very eager to learn what we do. And, and we are very excited to have her on board.
Welcome, very excited.
Welcome.
And then just to give you a couple of updates, the family subdivision amendment, text amendment, was denied by a vote of four to three by the Board of Commissioners. The campgrounds text amendment, the saga continues, there will be another workshop on Monday. Actually, the text amendment, this board recommended for approval a year ago, is now back on the table and is likely moving forward. The Board of Commissioners brought that back in regards to non-conforming campgrounds. They're looking at new campgrounds and getting a text amendment for that with the workshop on Monday. So that's still in the works, I'll keep you updated on that. And then the county manager search, just to give you the latest on that. In a workshop last week, the Board of Commissioners voted to keep Ike on board as the county manager until we find a full-time, instead of doing kind of an interim, interim county manager. And I believe they are going to go with a, get a firm to help us with the search, to bring in some candidates. There are over 40 openings for municipal town or county management open in the state right now. So they think that a firm would help us bring in some good candidates, so.
All right.
And that's what I have. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And anybody else have anything? Nope, all right, well, I'll open the floor for a motion for adjournment. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion adjourned, or motion pa.